You're at a, this is a board meeting. I understand that you're not able to make it, but you wanted to be included in the, as the call, correct?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, alright. Um, moving along now. Are you, are you through? I'm just trying to figure out what's going on. I thank you very much, and I mean. No, it's not a matter of proceeding, it's a matter of doing things the right way. Okay, the, um. I'll ask for a motion to approve the general proceedings of the special meetings held on August twelve, twenty twenty four.
So.
Second.
Moved by trustee, uh, Johnson, second by trustee Carter, any questions? Trustee will be, he's called.
Trustee Burns.
I'm standing.
Trustee Carrick.
Yes.
Trustee Coleman, trustee Coleman.
Trustee Coleman, can you hear?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, they asked you for a vote to approve the proceedings for the special committee that was held on August twelve.
Yeah, those are, may I?
Yes?
Yes, I approve.
Okay.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Seb, yes. Trustee Wood, yes.
Motion to carry. I'll ask for a motion to approve the general proceedings for the special board meeting held August fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
So.
Second.
Moved by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Carter, any questions? Madam Clerk, let me, now, now.
Trustee Burns.
I'm standing.
Yes.
Trustee Coleman. Trustee Coleman.
Can you hear, trustee?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Now I can. She's asking you for your vote for the August fifteenth minutes. Yes or no?
Yes, I am.
How many?
Upstate.
Okay.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Seb, yes. Trustee Wood, yes.
Motion to carry. I ask for a motion to approve the general proceedings for the board meeting held on August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four.
So.
Second.
Moved by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Carter, any question? Madam.
Trustee Burns.
I'm standing.
Trustee Carrick.
Yes.
Trustee Coleman.
Upstate.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Seb, yes. Trustee Wood, yes.
Motion to carry. Last motion to approve the general proceedings for the board meeting held September third, twenty twenty four.
So.
Second.
Moved by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Carter, any question? Madam Clerk.
Uh, trustee Burns.
I'm standing.
And trustee Carrick.
Yes.
Trustee Coleman.
Trustee Coleman?
Upstate.
Trustee Johnson, yes. Trustee Seb, yes. Trustee Wood, yes, I'm standing.
No, that's pretty great.
Um, actually, it is. The, the justice was to adjourn, she was on adjourned, she won't help?
That's what I, that's what I said, yes, I vote yes. Motion to carry. Alright, um, before public audits, we're going to go to item number ten. By natural matters, I'll ask for a motion to approve transfers, payrolls, and accounts payable distributions in the combined amount of one million, ninety-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-four cents.
Mr. Mayor, um, I would like to amend that motion, do you want to continue with your motion first, or do you want me to do my amendment first? And that, that number is not a million ninety-five, it's a million ninety-eight, you got to revise by interPOS, so before we came to the meeting. One million ninety-eight, that was the one hundred twenty-two thirty-four. Do you have?
Number, a million ninety-eight?
One million ninety-eight, that was one hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-four cents.
Okay, you'd like to amend that?
Yes, would you like me to make an amended motion now?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to amend the accounts payable in the amount of eight hundred eighty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-six cents? By, so I can read now, this is.
Wait a minute, I want to see the amount, eight hundred eighty-six dollars?
Eight hundred eighty-six thousand.
Okay.
Six hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-six cents, that would be the amended amount.
Okay.
I will read the amount slowly for you. Okay. Line item one, zero, 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 five, seven, two, six, zero, zero, and I will give you a copy. Um, and I have to fix and change this thing. And then it's the amount of eight, seven thousand, four hundred ninety dollars.
Eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and what?
Ninety dollars.
Okay.
The next line item is one, zero, 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 five, seven, six, eight, zero, 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 in the amount of ten thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. The next one is line item one, zero, 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 seven, one, six, eight, zero, zero, in the amount of one thousand, two hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Trustee, please, we could tell the other clerk if I don't know.
Which one, the last one?
Uh, the first one, or the seven?
Eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety. The line item is one, zero, 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 five, seven, two, six, zero, zero, zero.
And you're the last one.
The last one I read was line item one, zero, 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 two, five, seven, two, zero, I'm sorry, two, five, seven, two, eight, zero, 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 in the amount of ten thousand, five hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. The next one is line item one, zero, 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 four, five, seven, two, eight, zero, 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 in the amount of nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-six. Line item two, one, zero, two, zero, zero, seven, two, eight, zero, 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 in the amount of seven thousand, six hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. The next one is line item three, zero, 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 seven, six, eight, zero, 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 in the amount of seven thousand, six hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. The next one is line item one, zero, 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 seven, seven, two, six, zero, 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 in the amount of fifty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty cents. The next one is line item one, zero, 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 seven, seven, six, eight, zero, 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 in the amount of seventy-one thousand, six hundred twenty-four ninety-six. The last one is line item one, zero, 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 one, zero, seven, two, six, zero, 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 in the amount of fifty thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-four cents.
Fifty thousand, five hundred and six?
Fifty thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollars. Seventy-four cents, for a total to be removed of three hundred thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars and sixty-three cents. I would also like to add to this amended motion, um, including to pay the invoices for the E.D. law firm, which we have stated several times that we were going to pay, and so far she has not received payment. She is due a total of eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and fifteen cents, and I have invoices, Mr. Mayor. And if the finance department should have all of these invoices, for just the case, this is, um, a third party attorney that's had a lot of our mediation, and has put out a lot of her own money to file for cases and to work with the cases, and I'll make sure that you get all the invoices. Um, and I want to please add that to the accounts payable. So when you deduct the three hundred thousand, eight hundred thirty-six, sixty-three, and you add the eighty-nine, four oh seven fifteen, that is how you get to the eight hundred eighty-six dollars, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-six cents.
Okay, I need to see, you said you had something there, now I'm gonna see who.
This is your invoices for attorney E.D.?
No, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about.
I'm gonna give you that, but I'm sorry, because I found some changes, so, I'm gonna give you the line items, okay? There you go, and that's the total amount right there, so you should have everything that you need.
So this is your motion to, to do this, and you do understand? And the reason, well, I'm sorry, this is a motion on the floor, because I'm trying to figure out, I'll ask that. You make that motion to exclude three hundred thousand, eight hundred thirty-six thousand, thirty-six cent from the accounts payable, but you want to add, how much was that, eighty?
Oh, it was eighty-nine thousand. Eighty-nine thousand? Those were how much we owe attorney E.D. from, this is a tire here.
Is that on the, is that on the accounts payable?
No, it is not, it's been.
Oh, but if, if it's not on the accounts payable, how can you, how can you add it?
I'd like to add those invoices, I should.
I can add it.
And I add, but no, sir.
Yes.
We've done this before.
Okay, well, I don't see how you can add something to it, it hasn't even been.
Those invoices have been in the finance department for months, and this is our third party attorney who's not being paid.
Okay, but I didn't know that you, okay. I don't see how you can add something that's not on the accounts payable, or I mean, if that's the case, then we don't need, we don't need to have accounts payable.
I want to ask the attorney, I don't want to do anything wrong, I just like to give up.
Yeah, I'm not sure that you can, yeah, I, I'm just, I can all ask, I'm not sure that you can add to it, um, I don't want to give you the wrong advice and say, yes, do it, or tell you, no, don't do it.
Okay, I, I understand.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a comment.
Okay, I need, I need, I need, uh, trustee Wood.
Well, I would just say, if you were voting attorney Seb, that would you kindly see that those invoices are passed over to the finance department again? And it's on the next accounts payable, sir.
Okay.
Because that person deserves paying, she's worked a long time, a retired person, she's not.
Everybody worked hard for it.
Absolutely.
But we're not paying.
So I thought.
But we're not paying. Go ahead, stop. Go ahead, go ahead.
The attorney said we can't add, we can only do that.
Go ahead.
My, my suggestion.
Mrs. Sir, go ahead.
My suggestion would be to, as, as far as your motion goes.
We can't hear you.
Oh.
Thank you. Um, so my suggestion would be, because we aren't certain, would be to table, well, you know, if we've, have we actually formally adopted the amendment to the motion, like, we have? So you could make another amendment where you're removing the, uh, attorney E.D., where there is, uh, and table that consideration, uh, and we can vote on it at the next board meeting, make sure that it's on the agenda, and make sure, so then that way we're sure that everything is above board, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, because I do know that she was on the, that's what I'm looking at now. She was on the accounts payable, I don't know how much it was, but I know she was on here.
She was on the accounts payable of that week for eleven thousand dollars.
Okay, I do.
And it was not transferred over to this week's accounts payable.
Oh, it's not on here, you're saying?
And she's also been on the accounts payable for several of those other invoices.
So there's a lot of other people that we didn't pay, so, I'm just.
We're talking about, but they.
And, but, you know, you're talking about ten different items.
She has been on the accounts payable several times, on the agent for the department, and she has not gotten paid, now she's no longer, like I said, she keeps coming in and off the accounts payable, and the agent report, but she is not on the accounts payable at all.
Trustee, last week, or two weeks ago, we didn't pay any of that?
Yes, two weeks ago.
No, we didn't.
No, Mr. Mayor, I understand that.
Okay, so, but now, but now you're saying that it wasn't on there, and we're not paying people?
When the, when the board met last week, was there not supposed to be an accounts payable that was supposed to be approved that they?
What, what board, young board, people walked out, there was no board?
Well, I, I wasn't hearing.
There was a special board meeting, there was a special board meeting.
I understand that that should have taken that.
Well, okay.
Okay, the only reason that we did not pass the accounts payable in August was August twenty.
I had a special meeting last week to pay accounts payable, and a quorum didn't show up.
Okay.
So therefore, and there was a trustee that was here and left, which constituted of the not being a quorum, so therefore we could not pay.
Well, I informed the clerk last morning that I wasn't going to be here.
I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about me, quorum.
So, the point being, yes, attorney E.D. was on the accounts payable at the time, it did not have the accounts payable to get approved, but she dropped off the disaccounts payable, so have several of her invoices that should have gotten paid, I think since March, since, when, March?
I, I, the reason why I'm saying is, you're, you're making it sound like that, that's the only person that has not got paid.
I didn't say that.
But, but you're saying that she needs, that everybody that does work for the village needs to get paid.
Absolutely.
Everyone.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, but to say that she really, really, and the rest of them don't really, because you took off ten people.
Exactly what I was saying, Mr. Mayor, what I'm saying is, these.
You took off ten, you took off ten?
Several.
Vendors. These vendors here.
Ten vendors, it's three vendors in the total amount of, they're, they're listed on the accounts payable in several different line items, so it's not ten vendors.
Okay, so that's why I was asking, I'm trying to find out which vendors that you asked them to have taken off.
It's not a secret, it happened every two weeks, so.
No, I know one vendor, okay, but you gotta vote about the rest of us.
What am I?
The one for ten thousand, one for ten, another ten thousand, another.
They're on the accounts payable.
There's not, but there's no name on here, that's why I was trying to find out, who did you, who did you exclude?
A.I.C.
You have a contract with it, I said, why, why are you not saying that?
Do we discuss that during?
No, no, I'm asking, no, no. You asked, you, you had, this is the accounts payable, right?
So there's a motion.
So therefore he asked, I'm, I'm asking, yes, you can, this is a question, I'm asking, why are you not paying his people?
Because the A.I.C. invoice that was presented, that I just got to see today for the first time, shows a, um, an arrangement that was made, that I believe, and I checked with other trustees, that we voted not to go with that particular, um, arrangement.
Do you have, do you have any amendments for that?
I, Mr. Mayor, I was not able to see the.
No, I'm saying, you have amendments.
Agenda, I was not able to see the invoice until two o'clock today, and then I was caught out of timeframe, I've been asking for that since last week.
Okay, but I'm not, I'm not.
If I go back, I can.
So, but, but you're doing this on what, what reason are you doing, you said you didn't see it?
This invoice is fresh, it's zero to thirty days.
Okay.
We have invoices on the accounts payable that are one hundred fifty-one plus days.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm, I'm just with one invoice, why are you not paying all these people?
Why are you picking and choosing who you?
I'm picking and choosing the ones that you put on here.
And that's the one that the board, the four members of the board decided we wanted to put out.
All the four members?
The four members.
I think you appreciate that, so that's who's running, that's all, that's, that's who's running, okay, but I, I still like to see, before I go any further, who the, who this amount is, and who we're not gonna pay come tomorrow. Because they haven't paid anybody in a month.
That's not true, why you all keep saying?
When was the last time you had accounts payable paid?
Okay, first of all.
When was the last time? When was the last time?
We made a motion the second.
When was the last time we had accounts?
August thirteen.
August who?
August thirteen.
And what's today?
August, August seventh, well, I'm saying, you, Mr. Mayor, it's.
I'm sorry.
We have, we have a V.A. that's going around telling residents that we did not approve any accounts payable.
Why are you getting this information?
I have an email, I have an email.
Did you bring that email, could you bring that email to us? Could you bring, trustee, trustee, would you bring the email to us?
You're, you're included in the email, Mr. Mayor, you're included in the email, do you read your emails?
Do I read my email?
Yes, I'm not gonna mention the, the resident's name, but the resident wants to know why he hasn't gotten reimbursed for his mailbox, that public works destroyed back in January.
The mailbox, I know exactly what you're talking about, it was paid to the construction company.
No, it wasn't, no, it was not. The man is, the twenty-four hundred dollars for the man that was supposed to get paid, did not get paid, it was on the agenda.
Company that was putting the mailbox in, yes, that, that was paid, I saw the invoice. I saw the invoice and I signed the check.
Mr. Mayor, your behavior told, your behavior told you that the bill was not paid because.
I wanna see.
Okay, now you're, now you're talking.
No, I'm, I'm. Excuse me, I'm sorry, so let's, let's, let's get back on, trustee Williams, I'm sorry, let's, let's get back on track, um, because that's not one of the, I don't believe that that was one of the items.
No, it was not, he's bringing it up.
And I, I, I saw the email today, I understand what you're talking about, I think that that can be a, right, it was sent this afternoon, you know, so.
Did you see where the V.A. said that the, that was not paid?
Trustee, what I, what I'm saying about it is, let's talk about, like, this is not the, the time for us to have the discussion about it.
At what time will we discuss that tonight?
And we can discuss it after the meeting.
No, no, publicly, because I want it known that the V.A. told a resident that the board of trustees did not approve accounts payable for the entire month of August, and that's why he did not get paid, and that is in an email.
Okay, I'm gonna see the email, that's all I'm asking.
Your copy now.
Okay, I didn't see it, that email, but he asked at seven o'clock.
We'd have a chance to read it while, you know, he was preparing for the meeting tonight, doing other business, I mean, that's.
The email came through, uh, last week.
Last week.
I think it came through either Monday or.
My, my point that I was making is that, let's, we have a motion that's pending that we're discussing, so. We can just, if, you know, there are other opportunities during the meeting, we can, we can address that, we can talk about it some more. My, my recommendation would be that we don't discuss it right now, because it's not on the agenda, and we could, uh, I don't know if that resident is even here.
I don't know if it is, it only comes up during public audit, because I told you, it comes to be told.
So let's get back on track with the, we have a motion pending.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, Mrs. Sir, but my, my question is, I still, because they're not gonna get the call tomorrow, I will. I wanna know what vendors these are, and what they represent, fifty thousand dollars is not a little chunk of change.
And I spoke.
That's a, that's a healthy amount for us to have to hold that kind of money.
So you know who the first two are?
So I don't know, I just know who the first one is.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't, I don't know the second one.
Is A.I.C., I mean, um, A.I.C., do you know that?
The ten thousand, five hundred?
No, for, uh, seven, how about eighty-seven thousand, because there was two invoices, down line item.
And then I.
That, that, oh, this is A.I.C. for eighty-seven thousand, okay. The one for ten thousand, five hundred?
About our Anselon Glen, our village attorney. Mr. Mayor, we have made a statement several times, Anselon Glen arbitrarily raised their rates, thirty hours, starting in January. And we did not tell the trustees that they were going to do that, and we didn't find out until just recently that they changed their rates an additional thirty dollars per hour, that we do not have a contract or an ordinance.
Okay.
So that is why, and I have spoken to, uh, Mr. Sir today, and I have spoken to several people at Anselon Glen. All they're asking for is to get our invoices the same amount that our ordinance calls for. We don't have budgets for the last two years, we don't have audits for the last four years, we have no idea where we are financially. How can we just arbitrarily raise, how can we let someone else arbitrarily raise their bills to us? That's what we're disputing.
And, and trustee Williams, I spoke with our, uh, our executive committee before, before, after you and I just spoke, yes, um, and they offered to reduce the, the bill by five thousand dollars if it will be approved tonight.
That's, that doesn't show me whether that's the thirty dollars an hour from January, so can we just bring it back to the next accounts payable within a month?
Two more weeks.
We want you to get paid just like everybody else.
We, we, we'll pay.
We.
We, I say we, we, she said we.
You know we, I'm not.
So, but no, but, I'm sorry, I thought this was a complete bore, I see it's not.
This isn't complete.
No, it's not.
Four of us have chosen to.
Four of us now have, have chosen not to.
Four of us have.
Have chosen not to pay.
That is what we have here, to my.
Okay, no, you don't, but anyways, I, I like to, what's the?
Just one hour.
I'm, I'm trying to find out who are these people that are not paying. Okay, what's the, what's the one thousand, two hundred seventy-nine dollars?
All the last ones are all, uh, the attorney bills, the bills attorney, and we're gonna work it out, Mr. Sir, as we talk about.
All the last bills, all the last bills are all attorneys?
You got two, my, I can't really.
You didn't write, you didn't write, you got one on there, it's A.I.C., so all of them not attorney bills. So what you're trying to do is cripple the village, not, not pay the lawyer, no, ain't no Mr. Mayor, ain't no Mr. Mayor, definitely.
Pay the vendors, they took that a hundred and fifty days plus, you have people out here for five houses, they haven't got paid nine days.
Please, please.
And you're gonna talk about.
Oh, because we're, now, I'm talking about why.
Oh, if anybody wants to see a copy of the agent report, I'd be glad to show it to you.
Okay. Would you please send us what I asked you today?
That had been passed, you were.
Would you please?
We have not been heritage for our guests that works.
I guess not, it was on the account, it was on the accounts payable last week.
You know what? It's on the agent report.
It was on the accounts payable last week, and you didn't pay it then, so don't act like this is brand new, that we just had. You haven't paid a, you haven't paid a, you haven't paid accounts payable in a month, in a month, so don't set up the guy. Would you please do what I asked you to do? Alright, we said it, we can.
That is not true, they're lying at us.
Okay, they're lying, look.
This is what he did, he said.
Relax.
There is, there is plenty of past invoices I'm hearing.
Now, you didn't choose it?
To be approved accounts payable on August thirteenth, every one that they put on August thirteenth was paid.
No, it wasn't.
August twenty-seventh, it was not paid.
No.
Actually, that was the ones that were taken off, but not all these ones you're talking about, sir.
Okay. It's been a month that, since you made accounts payable, I was asking, tell me, I need to know, I need to know who those people are. And besides this, so they're all the lawyers in one A.I.C., A.I.C. you had, you had an agreement with them? The village had an agreement?
We had an agreement that we were gonna go over, what plan we were gonna go with.
With, oh, no, he, he brought it to the board for eighty-five thousand dollars, and the board voted on the des- installation and equipment, now you don't wanna pay it. Oh, okay, show it to, okay. Okay, no, we got, we did put that, so she amended that, so that, you can, you can do that, you can do.
What's going on there, we have, what's the?
I said we never moved the motion to a regular amount first, before you amended what you need to amend.
I know you did. I asked the mayor if you wanted.
You did not, because usually I pass the motion for the regular amount.
That is what I asked the mayor, did he want me to proceed with the amendment, and he said, yes, I listened to the mayor.
And that's what I was talking to the mayor about.
Would you please finish that question?
That you want to inquire, I told you.
That we're not paying, besides the lawyers in that seat, one of them, one seat. A.I.C. brother.
There's your three vendors, Mr. Mayor.
That all, everybody that's on here?
Yes.
So fifty-two thousand and fifty thousand are A.I.C. and another thousand dollars.
No, A.I.C. should be eighty-two thousand. The first one is for.
Eighty, well, one, one, okay, eighty-seven, eighty-seven.
Yes, and the next two is for A.I.C., and the rest is for Anselon Glen.
No, it's not, because that's saying here that one of them is for A.I.C., the one fifty-two thousand, three ninety-eight, and then you got a fifty thousand, five seventy-six, so I'm asking, would these two A.I.C.? There was something I take pride in not paying bills, no.
I thought we could avoid this tonight, but.
No, I, no, how are we gonna avoid not paying, how are we gonna just get a board to pay not paying bills? I don't understand that, you, you, you got work.
Mr. Mayor, what is your agent report, and your county invoices you don't pay?
I, I don't.
For the fire department, it's what, eight months old, and we have to pay those either.
You have to pay, you have, but you're gonna tell the lawyer that it's not paying.
But you're gonna be playing a board about A.I.C.
But A.I.C. has an agreement with the board, you voted, the board, the four, you voted.
So, so, don't say you're okay with that?
The board voted to pay him for the, uh, equipment and installation, it was on the board, it was, it was moved and seconded, and the board voted unanimously.
Accounts payable, they jump in different places.
What you mean they jump?
They're, they're like under different.
It has to be different line items, because it comes out of different accounts, that's part of being, that's part of being accounting, that's what accounting does. No, you're not trying to make sense for me, you're not trying to make sense for me, you know, okay, all you wanna do is argue, so, the show was on, the, the show was on, and, you know, it's that time of year where we can have this show, all I'm asking is, so I can be clear. That's all I asked to do in the first place.
Okay, okay, I'm doing it right now.
You had time to put that together.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't know, it's gonna have to be.
You didn't know you were gonna have, that you were doing, you didn't know you were doing?
Come on now.
Oh, you didn't know you were doing it?
Right?
Oh, you were, oh, no.
Of course not.
That's right, I'm, I'm not. That's right, I'm, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not gonna lie, I'm gonna stop you, that's right, no. I just did.
Thank you, uh, um, Mr. Burgess.
So now we're gonna, now we're gonna, we're gonna go there now, okay, we're gonna go there, I asked you to do something. So like, I'm, I'm just trying to do you, and you wanna be, you wanna, you wanna be disrespectful, fine. No, well, maybe you, maybe you need to be quiet. Yeah, okay, now, you, you, you're, you're a piece of work, piece of work, yes, you are, please do what I asked you to do, so I can find, so I can, uh, I can't keep you under control.
That's right.
Okay, so don't tell me about somebody else, so don't tell me about somebody else, see, that's what happens, you all feel so disrespectful, so disrespectful, but it doesn't matter. Okay, see, we're going, there we go, keep going, keep going, I see it.
The first one, this one vendor, the second two is the next vendor, and like I said before, all the rest are Ansel and Blake.
First two is one vendor.
First one amount...
I see that, and the second, the second two are one vendor, and the rest of them is, uh, Ansel and Blake, which is over two hundred thousand dollars.
That's the motion, sir.
But you still made a motion to, to pay the whole thing, sir.
Okay. Uh, due since March, AIC is due since September.
Yeah, no, AIC was due, it was due since you, since the board...
No, AIC is due since August, AIC is due since March.
AIC is due when you made the agreement to have the man purchase the equipment.
Paying everybody on time, sir, look at your AIC report.
Motion that, um, on the floor to pay eight hu... I'm sorry, eight hundred and eighty six dollars, six hundred and ninety two dollars and eighty six cent. Motion on the floor.
Some move.
Moved by Trustee Johnson and seconded by Trustee Seth. Please call the room.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Curran.
Yes.
Trustee Coleman.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Seth.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Motion carried, I, I have a B. Motion to approve allocation of funds for the attendance at the twenty twenty four I M L conference, inclusive of a three hundred dollar advancement for trustees and the mayor.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Johnson, seconded by Trustee Curran, any questions?
Yes, sir, I have a question. Uh, we've already approved the accommodations and, um, the registration, what are alloc-, what other allocation of funds for attendance do we have except the three hundred dollar advancement? It says inclusive of, but it doesn't just say the three hundred dollar advancement. Are there any other funds that you're anticipating that we're gonna have to allocate other than the registration and...
No, no, that's been paid for, no.
Right, so I think this issue is just something reading, motion to approve allocation of funds for the three hundred dollar...
This is what your clerk said, and we have worded that way, it doesn't say per diem.
I'm putting it on record that we've already paid for the, a hotel and the registration, and the three hundred dollar advancement for trustees, I thought our per diem was between one hundred and one fifty, I'm seeing three hundred, so...
Three hundred for all three days?
Yes, so what I'm saying is, this, this doesn't say anything about per diem on here.
No, I, tell me, I just say that the clerk changed it because she said that per diem is not correct anymore, it's not called a per diem, it's called allocation. So that's why it's on the account that way, I mean, on the, accounts payable that way, she changed it.
Did we not in- increase the per diem to between one hundred and one fifty?
When?
I, I believe that motion was made several months ago.
Not that I know of, no.
Okay, so we're gonna go with the three hundred dollar advancement, and no other additional funds should be allocated for the twenty twenty four I M L conference except that, in this motion.
Correct.
Okay, 'cause that's not the way, thank you.
Not the way it reads.
It says, motion to approve allocation of funds for attendance at the twenty twenty four I M L conference, inclusive of, that means including, three hundred dollars. What else is it being, what else is in there, that's all I'm asking, so I just want it clear that this is only regarding the event.
Okay, that, that is way, except for this year, it's always been per diem, but I was told that it's not per diem, but everyone that's been and came last year know exactly what it's for, and you know exactly what it's for.
It says allocation of funds inclusive of.
A.
It should just say allocation of funds for the three hundred dollar advancement.
Okay, well, you have to talk to the clerk, she's the one for that.
Okay, that's fine, I just...
Are there, are there any other questions? Would you please call the room?
Yes, Trustee Burns.
I abstain.
Trustee Curran.
Yes.
Trustee Coleman.
Trustee Coleman? Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Yes or no?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman, I get that one, let me just, Trustee Burns, Trustee... Um, Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Seth.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes.
Okay, I have number two, override the mayor veto message of the Village of Salt Village Board of Trustees on a motion to approve a resolution to authorize professional services agreement with John Howard from the Office of Inspector General for the Village of Salt Village.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Burns, seconded by Trustee Seth, any questions? The, uh, the override veto that I vetoed.
Mr. Mayor, my, my only, um, comment is that we went, the board, uh, trustees actually put this override on the agenda, though we do feel that the veto was taken out of timeline, but just to be cautious, we did decide to put the override on here, so, um, that's why I hope these are on the agenda.
Any other questions? Mayor? None, uh, sorry, wait, please call the room.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Curran.
No.
Trustee Coleman.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
No.
Trustee Seth.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Uh, uh, motion to override the mayor veto message on the Village of Salt Village Board of Trustees on a motion to override the AIC technology recommendation and proposal to upgrade the village's network and terminate AIC contract effect, effect of September fifteenth, twenty twenty four, per AIC contract.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Williams, seconded by Trustee Burns, are there any questions? My question is, that I do have a question, and this is regarding, we voted to have this person secure this upgrades in the police department and here in the village hall. Now, we're saying, take it back, I don't know if we can, I mean, once you get, especially when it comes to electronic equipment, you may not get your full refund, but we did make, I'm sorry, there was a vote for him to do that and to, uh, serve, and for him to install, just wanna let everyone know about that, that's it.
The date of the contract is, uh, is effective to terminate as a termination...
Okay, I'm not talking about the contract, I'm not, I'm not talking about the contract, I'm not talking about the contract, I'm talking about that you okay for him to purchase this equipment and install it.
Excuse, excuse me, Mr....
So, is the motion on the floor?
Excuse, Mr. Mayor, I need to make a comment.
Go ahead.
This equipment that you're speaking of, sir, was not approved by the board of trustees.
Yes, it was.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it was, but you're speaking wrong, because this would never bother if you...
I am speaking, sir.
Okay, but you, but you're telling a lie, yes, you did, yes, it is, I want you, I want you to...
If I'm, if I'm lying, let me continue my lie then, let me continue. So, again, again, AIC came to the floor and they gave the trustees an option to choose from three different programs and upgrades, and they did not allow the trustee to choose. Someone chose on our behalf. Now, again, I guess, they did not choose according to the trustees, approve. Now, the committee is over here, here that you know. The trustees did not approve an upgrade of the choices that AIC gave us, one for forty thousand, one for sixty thousand, one for eighty thousand. We did not make a choice, so they shouldn't have proceeded with any project without the consent and advice of the board, period. And so right now, we, now, if they went on ahead and did it, thank you for your free services, because again, unless you come before the board to get consent and approval, those things we do not recognize, sir, and it's in the minutes and it's right here, plain as day, with AIC, did not give us the opportunity to approve the project, the lo-, the one that we wanted to approve. So they chose what they wanted to choose, and again, like anyone else, attorneys or anything, you can't just add money onto this village and to these taxpayers without the consent and approval of the board, period. We're not to pay bills if we don't have invoices, if you want your bills paid, bring us an invoice, because again, why, why should we be paying bills and we don't know what we're paying? Again, why should we be paying bills and we don't know what's in our accounts? So again, I want, want to reiterate, September the fifteenth is the last day that I, AIC should be in this building. They had thirty day notice as of August fifteenth, September fifteenth is the last day that they should be in this building. They have been notified as well as every trustee and as well, as well as yourself, here.
Are you no? Are you no? I said, are you done?
Uh, no, you want me to say more?
Okay.
You want me to say more?
I'm just asking you, are you done?
Oh.
I know you can go forever, but I don't have that much time. So I don't have that much time.
I'm trying my best.
I'll ask, uh, Madam, uh, Trustee Burns, could you, could you, uh, call the room?
Trustee Burns.
You don't know where I hold on? No, I'm asking about her, you shaking your head?
I didn't hear, I didn't hear your question. Oh, you, you're wrong, you're a who's all comment, you weren't there. Yes, I said yes.
No, you didn't, you shook your head.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I should go, yes.
No.
Trustee Coleman.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
No.
Trustee Seth.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes.
Motion carried. Okay, going to public comments. All questions and comments will be, will be directed to the mayor, each speaker may comment on any matter concerning, concerning the business of the village, each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate. Counter replies over both, I'll answer all questions once all public comments have concluded. When you come up, please state your name, and can someone make sure that mic is on?
I can be first.
Hold on just one second, what'd you say? No. Okay, I, 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 hold on just a second, trustee, trustee, hold on just one second.
Yes, sir.
Every week, this is, we, 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 we meet every Tuesday, we meet every Tuesday, you knew that when you ran for this office, but if you're gonna leave every time.
Mayor Burgess.
If you're gonna leave every time, I can only, I can only, I can only say that, you know?
Mayor Burgess.
The last time you left, it cost us a million.
Mayor Burgess.
Last time you left, so...
We have finished the business, we have finished the business.
No, we're not.
We finished the business.
No, we're not finished the business.
And I told you, I...
So you just wanna hear what you wanna hear, good, good night, sir, good night, ma'am, good night.
Have a great night.
You good, you too, no you won't. I don't understand why you even, but you come down, that's okay. Ms. Anderson.
I am Francine Anderson. I am Francine Anderson.
Hold on just a second, what did you say, sir?
I said she needs to be...
No, I'm talking, he said something went out the door, okay, but that's...
And I ain't taking it back.
That's okay. Okay, Ms. Anderson.
I am Francine Anderson, and Mr. Mayor, you know what, in my opinion, these meetings get worse and worse and worse. Today, I've heard too many tremendous lies, and I come to this meeting so I can hear for myself, see for myself, so I can have my own opinion. The trustees just said the four of them have decided that they have taken the, the bills from four of the vendors off of the accounts payable. I have been at these meetings consistently, and you have lied to the public and said you have never seen invoices. If you ain't seen no invoices, then why are you taking them off? If you, you have also said to this public, I, I, 'cause I come for myself, that you also said to this public that you are not paying the vendors because they are on the present pay, uh, accounts payable, but not on the agent report, or they're on the agent report and not on the accounts payable. So tell me what's the truth, because I am too confused. Now, Burns left, and she always leaves, so she can't answer any questions, and again, not let me say Burns, let me say Trustee Burns, so that we don't get this thing going into calling people names. She said at the last meeting, which she left early, again, last week, that this particular board was going to have eight hundred thousand dollars that you weren't gonna approve. Then you sit here today and try to work them numbers and do the same thing that she already had told us a week ago that you were going to do. But for those four trustees that continue to make those decisions, please make sure that you're not doing it altogether in any place in this village, taking care of village business when it's not a public meeting, because the way you sound about your decision making is that you all have decided, you have your own little private meetings, making your own decisions about who you're gonna pay and who you're not gonna pay. So, now, if you're gonna continue to pick vendors that you're not gonna pay, and the reasons why you're not paying them, why do you sit here today to advocate for a third attorney company that most of the citizens don't realize that we have three, but we do have three, I wouldn't even, but they do. But you sit here and don't pay but one. And of course, that is your legislative attorney, why don't you pay the corporate attorneys who is for all the citizens? I tell you, y'all need to stop lying and somebody tell us the truth, or at least make it so that it's convincing, that one week you don't say one thing and then come back the next week and contradict yourself. And if you stop taking over all of the job duties of all of our employees, then the village manager could give citizens good answers, because he would have time to go and look for answers instead of pressuring him to say something to anybody about something. You wanna do the accounting, then you sit here and tell me that we can't pay a bill because you, the trustees, got to look at everything, you did not want them to get the sixty se-, you didn't give me my minute one, so I don't get my minute?
Thirty more seconds, would you like to see it?
Yes, please, give me my thirty four seconds, yes, please.
I'll just start it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thirty four, I gave you more time.
Oh, really, thank you, ma'am, I really appreciate that, uh-huh. Uh-huh.
David Smith, resident. Let me know when you're ready. All right. Regarding the override of AIC technologies. Number one, let me educate those who can't read or comprehend basic English. You all just voted to override AIC Technologies' recommendation. A recommendation is just that. You didn't choose the recommendation out of the three categories, the high level, the mid-level, and the low level. AIC, your approved IT technology experts, they made that recommendation and you all voted to approve it by a forty-two vote. Look it up in the minutes. So, for you to sit here and tell us residents that you didn't vote for it and that you didn't order the equipment is false. That is a lie. Number one. Number two, AIC Technologies spit eighty-seven thousand dollars and some change out of their pocket to do us a favor and upgrade our IT technology for our benefit. And now, you guys are not operating on good faith once again. You have already voted to approve their contract, whether or not you started or not before you voted on it, that's your fault. You still voted to approve it. And yet, still, after the fact, you voted to withhold their payment. Then, after that, you voted to approve their recommendations. And then, after the fact, you voted to cancel them, which is not operating in good faith. In a court of law, you all would be guilty in them. Us taxpayers, we're gonna be on the hook for all sorts of lawyer fees, all sorts of charges, and other things. And it's a damn shame that you all can't get your facts straight. That's just the honest-to-God truth. You all have heard every department head in here say, "We need these upgrades." You all disregard all of that. It's a shame. This is the reason why the phones don't ring down here, because we have a voiceover IT system that you all, it's probably too complicated for you to comprehend. But at the end of the day, when there's two or three people on the internet, the phones go straight to voicemail. You heard the fire chief in here say, "Eventually, when somebody has a heart attack and we can't get a proper response time, whose fault is that gonna be?" It's all IT related. And guess what? It's gonna have a trickle-down effect on our insurance rates eventually, because when word gets out and they figure out that we're not adequately, adequately equipped to handle certain things, premiums go up and all sorts of extra things, that maybe you all, if this is too advanced thinking for you all. But at the end of the day, if that's the case, then maybe some of you all need to get up and walk out of your seats, just like that one right there did, but never come back. Because at the end of the day, we need better. And we're not getting it right now. It is a shame that every week, we have a trustee who was elected to allegedly take care of business, but the only business she seems to really wanna take care of is going to a party in Chicago Heights every Tuesday night. She has six other days out of the week to take care of her business and go party, but she just has to schedule her party on the night that we pay bills. David Fields.
One of the big problems that I see when I come to these meetings is that certain individuals, it seems like they wanna set this village back. They don't want this village to progress. Everything that comes good for this village is turned down. And all you have to do is look at the record, it shows. When we start talking about facts about things, a lot of the residents is being lied to. They are definitely being lied to. And they're giving half-truth about things that's going on here in this village and the way things operate here in this village. If you're gonna be the person that li, lie all the time, don't give half-truth. Because when you give half-truth, believe me, there's somebody else that's gonna correct that situation and gonna let these people know exactly what's going on here in this village. We have people here in this village that believe, for some reason or another, that somebody's mouth is golden, the words that come out of their mouth is golden, and it's not. And it is not. And the thing about it is that they don't even try and encourage the people to try and do better, 'cause they don't do better. We're going through a transitional period right now here in this village that we shouldn't even be going through. Why? Because people have their own personal vendettas that they're trying to sell, and they're selling them on the backs of us. Cause we're the ones that's suffering. The village is suffering. And I don't know why, why you all can't understand that. We are the ones that's going through all this. Whenever there's a decision made pertaining to.
What, ma'am?
Our, our, our bills in Kenon, those bills are built on the backs of us as residents here in this village, as taxpayer citizens. Uh, they, they talk about this eight hundred thousand dollar bill. Well, it's an eight hundred thousand dollar bill, it may be a million now. Why? Because you're not paying nobody. And every time you don't pay somebody, that's when it's gonna go up. So, you all need to get off of that thing that you sitting on and start dealing with the real facts about what's going on. Pay these people their money. Pay these people. They have earned it. They have given us, came here and did what they needed to do, and you all should pay them. After all, when you all do something, you get paid and you make sure you get paid and there was a vote taken to make sure that somebody else got paid. So, why can't you use that same enthusiasm to pay these people that have did work already here in this village? So, we don't have this eight thousand dollars sitting up on us, or eight hundred thousand dollars. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on just one second. Trustee Coleman? Hold on just one second. Hold on just one second.
Hello?
Yes, I, I see we lost you, so you're back now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Frank Harvey. And my comment is only just one thing. It ain't that the people don't know, they just don't care. They wanna care about themselves. It's important, I mean, you're concerned about the village, be concerned about the people of the village and not just yourself and your property.
Is that it?
That's it.
No, no, I'm just talking about you, sir. I'm just talking about anyone else, and you, when I say that, someone jumps up. So, okay. There were four people, and four, out of the four people, there were all comments. Uh, so, I just wanna say that, uh, I appreciate the comments, as always, and, uh, the people that, that you made the comment to, we're here to hear that, so I'll just leave that alone. So, thank you very much for your comments. Okay, reports of officers. The mayor's, uh, report. Uh, I don't have a lot to report right now. Uh, I'm going to let my, uh, some of the work director kinda make sense out of, you can't make, really can't make sense out of water main break. Water main break is a water main break. So, but, um, I just wanted to say thank you to all the residents that were involved, that, that, that impacted, and, uh, thank you for your patience, uh, in that, in that time of need. Uh, there's nothing worse, well, I guess it could be, your lights went out too, so. But I just wanna say thank you very much, uh, to the residents that was, that was involved in that. Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit more, uh, next week about the IML conference. I'm hoping that when we go down there, that we're down there for business. And I'm hoping that everyone that went down, that's going down, brings back a report. I'm just wanna put that out there. Brings a report back. We're paying for you to go, please bring something back to show that you attended some of those seminars and some of those things that are gonna be presented down there, so. And I said this, I say this every year. So, I just wanted to make that statement. So, that's, that's all I have to say. And, um, the clerk is not here, so I'll go to the interim. Now, I'm going to, Mr. Johnson, Ken Johnson, the village administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. In preparation for this board of trustees meeting tonight, I want to take the opportunity to provide the audience with the following report. First, I wanted to take a moment to make special mention of Mr. Dante James, our head of public works, and acknowledge the fact he's got a splendid job. Dealing with and managing through a number of recent, recent emergency situations that have occurred within the village, of course, he's consistently shown a tireless commitment and a proven ability to continually execute on these various projects, notwithstanding the level of complexity of some of the projects. The Illinois Tax Increment Association is holding an event next week, Wednesday, September eighteenth. Our esteemed mayor, Mr. Derek Burgess, will be moderating on a panel featuring Mr. Mike Mallon and Mr. Sean Park, two subject matter experts from the grocery store industry. Also participating on these panels of experts will be Mr. Nick Greifer, representing Southland Development, which supports us in a consulting role. This Thursday, September twelfth at five P.M., SDA as well is hosting its own event, "The Future of Local Grocery Store," at a private business, RODA Signs, R-O-E-D-A Signs, which is located nearby at Illinois three ninety-four and Cottage Grove Avenue. Registration for the event is a hundred percent free, and there will be a tour following the facility, the RODA facility afterwards. In addition, Mr. Mike Mallon will be speaking along with Mr. Bo Kemp of SDA, he's the president of, uh, SDA, and Mr. Chris Dallas, grocery store veterans, owners and operators of Harvest Times Food in Chicago. The zoning board of appeals, public meeting that I mentioned in our previous board of trustees meeting, has been formally scheduled for September twenty-fifth at seven P.M. and will be held in the Soft Village Senior Center for the two initiatives that we've discussed at the recent committee of the whole meeting. Public notice was appropriately issued on September fourth. Given the new Soft Village website has more functionality than the prior, we are now able to push out key communications to the Soft Village residents and information regarding emergencies, such as the ones that were handled over the weekend, or other announcements that we would be of concern to all residents in general. I'll be conducting a virtual meeting coming up with the mayor, with the senior advisor to Illinois State Treasurer, Mike Frivich. One of the primary responsibilities of that group, the treasurer's group, is to identify strategic imperatives for the treasurer and allow various municipalities, schools, and general businesses in Cook County to discuss potential opportunities to collaborate on, to advance the action on our behalf. That's my report for the evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Could you, could you give us, when you get to, would you give us a real report?
Send it around to us.
Thank you. Okay, uh, reports of departments, corporate counsel. Uh, Mr. Sturt from Al, Alson and Glade.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had nothing to report up until, I didn't have anything to report until about five o'clock this evening, when I received a complaint. Uh, it was filed, uh, today, it's served on, uh, the mayor, uh, in the village, filed by John Howard. Um, the, uh, proposed inspector general for the office, excuse me, uh, for the village, uh, just reminded the board that, um, even though the, there was an ordinance that's been passed adopting the office of the inspector general, um, the board cannot, uh, make appointments or hire, hire employees. So, Mr. Howard, uh, although he has this lawsuit that's pending, um, he is not an employee, uh, or an official with the village, um, and, uh, directed the, uh, instructed the village administrator and the mayor that, uh, Mr. Howard, uh, continues to enter the premises and try to gain access and to continue contacting the police department. Thank you.
Um, police chief, I'm sorry, Police Department Chief Malcolm Wade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the court, citizens. I just have a calls for service report for tonight, uh, from the period of August twenty-seventh to this morning, uh, police department responded to more than three hundred seventy-seven calls for service during the same period, officers made thirteen arrests. Uh, that concludes my report for tonight.
Okay, did you disseminate that to the trustee?
Uh, I was gonna submit it to the.
Okay, to the clerk, I'm sorry, okay.
All right.
Did you say something, trustee? Okay, I'll move to a final project, chief.
No, I, no, sorry about that, if I, uh, if I interrupted anything, sorry.
Okay. Uh, Fire Department Chief Stephen Bear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, board of trustees. For the period of August twenty-seventh through tonight, the Fire Department responded to a hundred and fifteen calls for service. Uh, I just wanted to make and mention that tomorrow is nine eleven, so if you just think about those that lost their lives during that tragic day, uh, they just have to work. And that concludes my report, thank you. Mr. Mayor. I submitted it. To the clerk, on Friday.
All right, uh, Finance Department Director Renee Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have my report tonight, I wasn't able to get into the bank, but I will put the, um, cash report in the trustee's mailbox in the morning.
Okay.
And I just wanna state for the record, trustee Williams stated that she was given a time limit to review the invoices today. Trustee Williams came to her meeting fifteen minutes later, and I told her that we could not sit and review invoices for the rest of the day, because me and the accounts payable clerk had some other things to do, other projects to work on. So, I would just like to put that on the record, that we set appointments, and then appointments are not, our time is not appreciated. They show up at whatever time, if they show up. So, I'm gonna put that on the record.
Mr. Mayor. We're not gonna move back and forth.
Oh, oh, okay, I'll make it to my comment then.
Oh, you won't do it anyway.
That's right.
Thank you. Director, uh, uh, public works director Dante James.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, we had like, uh, fourteen water main breaks in the last week and a half. Basically, all on the north side, once you get one fixed and one will pop around the corner. I know it's been rough on some of the residents on the south side, but, you know, we just can't put a time on it when we get in that hole and try to patch this stuff up, and something pops a half a block away or in the same hole, and we just ain't been having too much luck with that. There's a lot of old stuff in the ground, so, uh, that's what we've been doing a lot of lately. Uh, tired as hell. Uh, I mean, sorry. Um, we're doing some maintenance work at well three, starting, uh, where we actually started today, and hopefully, we'll have some good news about well three actually being functionable after, what, some years, way before I got here. But, uh, hopefully, we'll have some good news the next time you see me, and, uh, that's all I got right now.
I just wanna say thank you, sir. Um, I know for a fact that it was forty-eight, it was two days in a row that I came out and you were there for that water main break that was on, um, Clyde Avenue. That's why I was thanking everyone for, for, for doing that, uh, and, um, I know you, I, I can hear your voice, you're tired, and, um, and I appreciate that dedication to the village and the residents. But, as I stated before, water main breaks happen, and I'm just glad that you guys were on top of it. And we had to bring out a outside vendor to, uh, help, uh, take care of that water main break. Uh, so, and then they had to bring out, they, they brought, when they came out, they brought their, their, their clientele also, so. But, um, there was some things that happened that I wasn't happy with. So, but there was some things that happened that I wasn't happy with, but I'm not going to discuss them right now, but I just want to say thank you guys very much for what you did. Because every time I drove over there, it was somebody, you guys were there. And it seemed like the same guys. So, all right. Moving along. Emma's not here. I'll see her. Board, I'm sorry, Fire and Police Commission Board Chair. Oh, okay. Ms. Colby, I'm so sorry. My fault. Senior Advisory Committee Vice Chair, Ms. Deborah Colby.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees, and residents. Our report is as follows. Breakfast Bingo is every first and third Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the senior center. Please come out and enjoy breakfast with us as well as play bingo with us. Also join our seniors for senior fit every Tuesday and Thursday mornings from 10:30 to 11:30 a.m. This class is for seniors ages 50 and up, and we have a great exercise class led by Carol Coleman. You can also contact her for more information. The times for our game night are 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. every second and fourth Friday. Come out and join us for games such as Big Wist, Banco, Domino's, and more. Our next casino trip is scheduled for Wednesday, September 25th. The cost is $40 per person and includes the bus ride, $15 play voucher, $10 food voucher. The money is due Friday, September 13th. You can contact either me or Carol Coleman. The bus leaves the senior center at 10:00 a.m. Back that way. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
Our second annual senior family picnic that was scheduled for Saturday, September 28th has been canceled for this year, so stay tuned for next year. And finally, our next committee meeting is Thursday, September 12th in the senior center at 5:00 p.m. All are welcome. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Now, Fire and Police Commission. Ms. Francine, chairperson, Ms. Francine.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, our Fire Commission report consists of that we only still have one individual on police and one individual on fire. So we will be looking at dates to offer the testing again soon.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go down to item number 11, reports of standing committees. Budget and Finance Committee and Audit, trustee Eugene Carter.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Audit Review Committee, trustee Otto Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report at this time already, but I would look forward to coming back.
You say you like.
I say I'm looking forward to coming back.
Oh, coming back, okay.
Yes.
All right. Looking forward to having you.
Okay, thank you. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Public Service, trustee Raven Johnson.
Our next Public Service Committee meeting will be held here and rescheduled on September 26th at 7:00 p.m. We will be hosting an October event, Little Children Halloween event, and the gym on Halloween on October 31st. We're asking for candy donations. If you can, please drop it off here at the village hall. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Housing and Government Relations, trustee Diane Sapp.
Good evening, everyone. The housing committee meeting, which was scheduled for September 11th at 7:00 p.m., will be rescheduled for a different location. The date will be announced. I'm still collecting donations for the housing committee's closet called Diane's Closet for the needy women and men and children in the community. There will be a flyer available at our next meeting. That concludes my comment.
Okay. Community Development, trustee Debba Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sock Top articles were due yesterday. Sock Top will be released before the 15th. There's a few items, a few events happening on the 14th, so I'm going to try to get it released as soon as possible so everyone will be aware of those events. And also, we, the committee met last week, and we're discussing the vacant properties in the village, some of which have been vacant for quite some time. We're making a list of, and trying to see if we can get somebody within the village confines to help us to locate who the owners are, may or may not be, what's been done up until this point to get these properties fixed. Because especially the ones on Sock Trail, there's a lot of properties that have been vacant for a long time. And that's our main drag downtown. It's really not, does not look good when people come through town. So that's our initiative right now. I know the mayor says to keep your report to your committee, but it's very difficult to do that when there's a lot of things that need to be said because a lot of things happen during the course of the meeting. And if you don't get the opportunity to discuss some of those things that happen, what other time do you have to do that? Other than it's time to, you have to speak. A little while ago, I was trying to mention how the board of trustees were copied on an email that the VA sent that claimed that the reason why a gentleman did not get reimbursed for his mailbox, did not get reimbursed for his mailbox, was because the VA said that the board of trustees did not approve accounts payable last month, meaning the entire month of April. I reached out to that gentleman, and I asked him, I told him actually that that's not true. We did approve accounts payable on August 13th. In this strand of emails, it says specifically, August 14th, I think. It said specifically, his reimbursement would be on that accounts payable. We did approve the accounts payable of August 14th. Why he doesn't have his check, I don't know. So what I told him to do, and if he's in the audience today, he knows what I told him to do. If we did approve the accounts payable on August, that's a lie on the trustees. A lot of lies get told on the trustees over and over again. As far as accounts payable is concerned, the vendor that he's referring to, AIC, their invoice is like maybe 30 days old. I got an agent report here. We have the people that we buy our gas for, our vehicles, our police department vehicles, our fire department vehicles, our public works vehicles. There's $23,151 days past due. That's in general to getting our ambulances and our fires, our fire equipment and our policemen out there to the streets, and we're not paying our gas, but we owe them a total of $28,000. There's a lot of bills on here that have been held. We have the Cook County Department of Public Health who does our health inspections. There's invoices on here from 2023. And no, the trustees did not pay that. We paid them tonight because they're on the accounts payable. And there's several. I could go on, but I don't mind being a lie-er to a resident, and I know it happens all the time. And as far as saying that we can't get our invoices, it's very difficult to get an appointment, to get invoices. Yes, I was late today. The food drop happened late in the day, and I had to wait till I could clean up behind where all the food was left over. A lot of perishable items were left over. So I apologize for being 15 minutes late. I was out of there by 3:08. But I have one hour from Friday, when the accounts payable comes out, until tonight. I have given one hour to review the invoices. The stack was this thick. I came, I did my due diligence, and I reviewed the invoices. But I just want to mention one more thing that the trustees started the court action back in January because we weren't getting our financial records. And we had to go to court in order to make that happen. We tried to hire an outside auditor and an outside person to come in and do the bank records to assist the finance department so we can get our finances moving. That case has been continued, 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 continued. It came to court the other day, and the affidavit from Mayor Burgess specifically states that the trustees have had full unfettered access to village's financial records, including bank account information, accounts payable, payroll, books of the village, budget records, and accounting records. The audit is retained by the trustees. They have been allowed to view any and all financial records. The trustees can see all village finance records, bank statements, budget information, accounts receivable, payables, and the village director's finance office Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Furthermore, trustees do on a regular basis review these records. Now, mind you, this says that we can go in there anytime between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. I was given an hour, and then I was called out because I was 15 minutes late. I'm given an hour. Okay, not unfettered, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. Also, it says that the auditors can anytime Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 p.m. to go to the director finance office and review the village's records. The auditor that we had hired through this lawsuit was told that she no longer, she was restricted. Her ability to view was restricted. The mayor said he wasn't aware of that. So my point is that this is a legal document, and I'm telling you on record tonight, I had one hour. When I was 15 minutes late, I was told that at the end of, at 3:00 o'clock, she would pull the invoices for me and she would walk out the room. Okay? So that would be, I had 42, 42 minutes. Okay? I need a little bit more than 42 minutes. Actually, I should have from Monday through Friday. And lastly, let me tell you this. I did a FOIA on July 1st for bank statements from March 1st through the present. A FOIA, Freedom of Information Act. I am supposed to be able to see this according to this affidavit, unfettered. I should be able to walk in here at any time and say, I want to see the bank records. I want to see the statements. I did ask for it as a trustee. I was not given it as a trustee. So I FOIA as a resident. I still do not have those bank statements. I had to do a request for review with the attorney general's office because I still can't get access to the bank records. But what does this say? I have unfettered, unfettered, the ability, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. I do not have that ability. I'm not that able. You are spending your money. Well, you may not understand what's going on with these accounts payables, but we do. You might understand how we haven't had a budget in two years or an audit in four years, and we don't even know how much money we have. So when we ask to see a bank statement and we don't get it, that makes me even more suspicious. Why should we give people a raise? Why should we give the attorney a raise? We don't even know how much money we got. I believe that the budget, the last budget that was passed in 2022, I believe that the entire, entire legal budget was like 300,000 to 400,000. We have so far exceeded that. We have so far exceeded that. So let's go ahead and give them a raise just because they want one. No, I'm sorry. I'm a trustee. You trust me. I can't do that. I'm working for you. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Let me, so I mean, I guess, let me say this, and it's, I just want to say, first of all, I want to say I apologize for you guys having to sit through this back and forth. You know, lies here, lies there. I'm not doing this. I'm not doing this. You elected us to move the village forward, not sit. Anybody can vote to not pay bills. But you know, I'm not even going into why you didn't pay it or whatever. It's just that that's your fiduciary responsibility is to, is to pay bills and to, if you don't know, ask someone. But don't come and point fingers and tell lies and only because you said that that's supposed to be the way it is. Again, it's that election time, and you're going to have people that's going to be back here grandstanding back and forth or whatever. It's going to be up to you, the residents, to put whoever you feel is competent enough in the office. Only thing I tell people that I've said is ever since I've been running, do your homework. Do your homework in who it is you're trying to bring in, or who wants to come in to represent the village. Do your homework. I, I, I don't understand, because I do know each and every one of you guys here that have a job and worked any place that you worked at. And they tell you on Friday or whatever day it is that you get paid, they're not paying you. And the reason we're not paying you is because someone else said that we shouldn't pay you. Or you haven't did this, or you haven't done that. You should let them know, or you, I know I would want to know before payday that I don't have my, I'm not getting my money. So all I'm saying is, that's not good business. And it will put a bad spin on everybody's clap, and it will put a bad spin on this village that we won't be able to do business if we don't pay our bills. So who's going to, who's going to trust us? We all know how the credit system works. You don't pay bills, your credit score goes down. And so you could, you used to be able to borrow $1,000 and pay 10% or maybe 5%. When your credit goes down, you're going to pay 30% for that same $1,000 that you're trying to borrow. So to put this village in that type of way, because we used to have a credit, a credit rating. It's not that way anymore. You got, you got all these bills without any reason, but that's, that's what it is because they can't. They have the votes to do it, and they have the votes to put this village in harm's way, and that's a shame. And I'm sorry that you guys had to see this or whatever it takes, however you feel about it. Bottom line is you don't pay bills, you don't get services. So that's the only thing I can say, and I'm just hoping that, you know, one day that, you know, whenever I'm not here anymore or whatever, that they understand just how important it is, just like the light company and the gas company. Don't pay them for money. See what you, when you turn that light on, it don't come on. Or you try to put that air, I mean, that air conditioner, but your furnace on, it don't come on. So only thing I'm saying is, you, you, you have to get on top of this ahead of time and not grandstand. It is not a good look to say I'm not paying bills. But if you come in and try to, to go over it, okay, fine. But if you didn't see what you wanted to see, then I'm not paying bills. That's, that's, that's really, that's really something. That's all that I have as far as tonight. I'm glad you guys came out to hear, but you come out in a week to hear. But I just wish we had a different tune to play because right now, the ones that are losing out, are you guys sitting out here? That's refu. You're losing out on that. I'm not talking about anything of you losing out because you have, you're looking at your village, but it seems like they're trying to make it that way, not progressing. I've even heard people say, talking about Dalton or whatever. This has nothing to do with Dalton. This has something to do with moving this village forward. And yes, I'm willing to try my best. As long as I'm mayor and this village, the move is forward. That's what we have to do. And if we don't do it, then I would regress what I'm supposed to be doing. And also, I'll let you people down. So. That being said, I ask for a motion to adjourn. A move by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Williams. Did you hear that? He's off the phone. Okay. Well, with the people that we have here. Wait, wait, we got two people here. Please call, bro.
Yes, trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Sapp.
Yes.
Trustee Carter, trustee Carter, we're not going to have you.
Motion carried. Good night, chief.
Good night.
What's up, ma'am? How are you?